We'll give it one more shot. Barb, can you hear us now? Excellent. Sorry.
Okay, but we can't hear you, Barb.
She's muted.
Oh, she's muted. Okay. All right.
I'm all good. Thank you.
Okay, good. All right, so the adoption of the meeting minutes from the February 2nd meeting, on favor? Aye. Opposed? Carrie. Okay, our first order of new business, PLZBA 2022-0004. 406 Fulton Street, an area variance for the addition of units, commercial to residential. The applicant Gray Hill Group proposes to convert the upper four floors of the Ilium Building from office space to residential apartments. So I'll just leave it at that, and Barb, we'll have you explain what it is you want to do.
Sure. Sure. Thank you very much. My name is Barb Nelson. I'm with TAP Inc. We produced the site plan and did the analysis for our clients, Gray Hill Group, and I expected that they would be here. Maybe they're running late, but we'll proceed without them, I guess. First of all, I need to make a correction here in the math that I had previously, in the application for the area variance, it notes that we are looking for, the total unit count would be 45. In fact, it will be more like 40. We've done a little bit more sketching and you know, just quick preliminary look at the number of units that could possibly fit here, so it seems to be dropping, so I would drop that to 40 at this point. The upper floors of this building are all commercial. They are all badly in need of interior updating. There's a lot of work to be done in the building. The new owners are prepared to do that work, and they would like to convert it to residential. The apartments would be mostly one-bedroom and studio apartments, and the resulting density will exceed the current zoning ordinance's limit of 120 units per acre. So on the variance here, it says 214 is the new density, and again, that is incorrect. I have .21 acres. If I have 40 units divided by .21 acres, we are closer to 190, maybe even 180. So, but I understand we need a number, a maximum number here. The variance request, we don't think creates, or the client does not believe this creates an undesirable change because mixed-use buildings are very common. It's very much the nature of this neighborhood to have commercial on the first floor and residential above. And in fact, the commercial spaces in Troy are becoming harder to rent. You know, for office space, so we feel it doesn't change the character of the neighborhood. The, reading my... So by virtue of this variance, the benefit will be pretty much the marketability of the building, so they're much more likely to keep the spaces filled and keep a good waiting list, because residential is so marketable and popular in Troy. It doesn't appear that this variance is really substantial, because it's very much in line with the comprehensive plan, and it really doesn't change so much the parking demand, because it's the same amount of space. And it's very possible that the number of people seeking parking spaces who live there, they would more likely be parking at night when the demand is not quite so high. Questions that I could answer? Again, it's not believed that this is an adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood. In fact, the new owners plan to do extensive renovation of the building, and I did submit some photos just last minute, if that's helpful for people to see. And I think anybody purchasing this, whether they were keeping it commercial or moving to residential, would be investing probably a similar level of work, so it's a sizable improvement. And that's how we address the self-created difficulty. Again, anyone purchasing this building would expect to be, we would expect anybody purchasing this building to be upgrading it, and so there's a couple million dollars involved. And so whether it's residential or commercial, it would be pretty much the same impact, so they would... Can't read my own print here. I'll just open it up for any questions.
I have an observation, I think maybe more than a question, but I don't know, Barbara, if you'd want to answer to Aaron, perhaps? Only because I don't recall, maybe it's me, having the explanation given in terms of units per acre, particularly when we're talking about downtown-type development. It's hard for me to, I mean, I understand, and I, you know, I'll say it right now before I vote, I support it, but I mean, I'm just saying. You know what I mean? When people talk about acres on Fulton Street, I, we've never done that. We've never used that type of language before, am I right?
The way, the way the code is written, the, sorry, can you hear me? The way the code is written, the density requirement is units per acre. So when we discuss a variance from that, we have to express it in terms of units per acre.
I don't recall that of being the case. That's why I'm bringing him up. Am I right? You remember that, density per acre? With units per acre? I mean, I know density, but units per acre was hard for me to wrap my head around.
So here, if I understand Barb correctly, she's asked that we amend the way it was described to the agenda, not 50 units, but 40. So again, this is 40 units on a .21 acre parcel, so 21/100ths of an acre. So just over a fifth of an acre. The zoning code allows for up to 120 units per acre. When you do the math, 40 units on .21 acres works out to rounding up 191 units per acre. So they're asking for relief of 71 units per acre, which is not quite double. Yeah, it's not, on the agenda, it was almost double the density. They're asking for, you know, approximately an increase of about 50, 55% of the density.
Okay. But I do also agree understand where one would want to make smaller apartments in a building like that, because anybody who has people who would need a three or four-bedroom building would not be wanting to live in downtown anyplace.
Well, I think Kathy, you're very right. There is a need for three- and four-bedroom apartments. If those large apartments are downtown, then they should also be places that have green space and accommodate families. If not, they kind of become student housing.
And also, of course, then if you're going to make them smaller apartments, you're going to have more apartments. That just, I mean, you know, rather than have one, three or four bedrooms, you're going to have maybe three, one bedroom, or three studios or something, which would be a good reason why you would have that difference in the density over what you would not need a variance.
And there are plenty of locations where larger apartments are viable.
Oh, for sure. But that's not it.
Even downtown, but this building has no parking, no green space. It's close to campus, close to work, so it's more of a walkable location.
Right. And I did just want to make a note that we got a letter from CDTA stating their support for the project.
Nice.
Building is located right across from their project, and they're hoping that it would encourage people without cars, because their rapid line is right there.
Nice. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions for the applicant? Do we have anybody here to speak in favor of this?
I see that Moshe is here. He's the owner.
Yes, I am. This is Moshe Blurin, Principal of Gray Hill Group.
Oh, you're the principal of Gray Hill, did you say?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Do you have anything you'd like to add, or?
No, I think what Barb said is really a summary of where we're at. I think the point about the one-bedroom is, the one-bedrooms are very important. Three-bedrooms would be very difficult for us to work with here. We found that while being an owner in downtown Troy for the past about five years, we found that the one-bedrooms have been, you know, what's in demand in the area? And, you know, we would like to extend on that. So I know Barb already made her point, and I completely agree with her.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else to speak in favor of this proposal? Anybody to speak in opposition? Do we have any further questions from the board?
I just want to clarify that when a motion is made, are we changing it to 40? And are we changing, did you say it was 71?
Yes, you did.
Units?
Correct. The relief sought is 71 units per acre.
Okay. I just want to know ahead of time before we actually...
Right. Okay, if we have nothing further to discuss? We do need a secret.
So, Madam Chair, for PLZBA 2022-0004, I ask that the board find this proposal to be an unlisted action with sufficient information available on which to make a determination that the project is not expected to cause significant environmental impact.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, John, and on the motion on favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Carried. Okay, do we have a motion on the application?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion in regards to PLZBA 2022-0004. The motion is to approve the application granting the corrected numbers of 40 units proposed and relief of 71 units per acre. And this is based on the contents of the application that was submitted and the information that's been presented here this evening. The benefit, pardon me, can't be achieved by other means feasible to the applicant. An undesirable change in the neighborhood will not occur. The request seems to be in keeping with the current density in the neighborhood. The request will not have adverse, pardon me, physical or environmental effects, and the difficulty is not self-created.
Okay, do we have a second on that motion? Jack McCann, oh, I'm sorry. And on the motion, Katie McLaren?
Yes, to approve.
Jack McCann? John Normile?
I vote yes.
And Kathy Conroy, I vote yes to approve. So, good luck.
Thank you.
With that one, and now we'll move on to the next one, which is PLZBA 2022-0006, Five Broadway. An area variance for the addition of units, commercial to residential. The applicant Gray Hill Group proposes to convert offices on the second floor of the Cannon Building to nine residential apartments. Barbie? Oh, okay. Okay, go ahead, Barb.
Okay, thank you. Barb Nelson, again, from TAP, 210 River Street. Again, this is the same owner, Gray Hill Group, and they have purchased Five Broadway, the Cannon Building, which is already occupied on the second, third, fourth, and fifth floors with residential apartments. There are just seven existing commercial offices on the second floor. They would like to convert those seven existing offices into one, two, and one and two-bedroom and studio apartments. A total of nine apartments will fit in that space, and again, all of the conditions are similar. The unit density will, the resulting unit density will be 146 units per acre, and 120 units per acre is the limit under the current zoning ordinance, so we're looking for a relief of 26 units per acre, and all of the other arguments and conditions really remain the same.
So basically, you're changing the apartments on the second floor? I mean, yeah, the third, fourth, and fifth are already apartments.
Right, and half of the second floor is already apartments as well.
That aren't on the second floor is what you're changing.
Right, second floor has four, and when completed, there will be 14. What do I say here? Is it 14 or 13?
You said nine.
Nine, okay.
Okay. So you're not doing any...
Got on my map.
Third, fourth, and fifth floors, you're not doing anything that's already there.
No, those are already set.
All right.
I have a questionnaire. Oh, I'm sorry, is this the one that was amended? I printed out. My agenda says 147.
This one says 147 also. But there wasn't a...
But the packet says...
Angela put it out of your own, right, an amended one. No, no, but I mean, you said it out.
That was the one you sent, and this was the amendment that was made?
Oh, which one? That one was called an amendment?
That's what I thought. Yeah. So the application in the paperwork says 146. It's just our agenda says 147.
Yeah, so what I did was I rounded the numbers up. So if the math came out to 146.00001,
Oh, gotcha.
146 is less than that, so I rounded up to the next.
To be safe. Okay, all right. Okay, 147 then. That's fine.
It doesn't allow for any more than nine units, right?
Right.
Okay, so do we have anybody here to speak in favor of this proposal? Anybody?
Could I ask Moshe to confirm nine versus 10 new units, because this would be the time to verify or confirm that.
Hi, this is Moshe Blurin again, from Gray Hill Group. Barb, I believe we confirmed that we can fit 10, but because of different construction reasons, we may only be able to do nine. But 10 does fit in the layout very easily.
Okay.
But we may end up only doing nine.
But we can approve on a May, so we need to know.
So I would, I would like to go for 10 if possible.
So that would be a maximum of 10, if that is agreeable to the board. As I said, we don't get into a lot of architectural design until we have approval, so it's sort of a cart and horse thing. But to be safe, 10 would be a maximum.
Is that okay, Erin or Andy, to...
We just have to change the relief.
To change the, legally speaking?
Sorry, bear with me a moment.
Sorry for the changing numbers. It's very schematic.
Okay, so they are asking for a density of 154 units per acre.
So 34.
So, yeah, they're asking for relief of 34 units per acre, not 27.
And is that okay to change it while we're here?
I...
Rather than legally?
I mean...
I mean, I don't think anybody cares.
Long as that's what our motion is.
It was noticed as nine, and the numbers in the notice were nine. But the board could take the position that this is the minimus request, rather than a substantial request to alter the application, and in that case, you can act. But when you do your secret analysis, please do the secret analysis with 10 units instead of nine.
Okay.
I think the result may be the same, but you need to consider the environmental impacts based upon that.
Okay. Legally, we can change it. Okay, do we have anything further to say? Anybody?
Thank you.
I'm just going at the secret.
Okay, so Katie's going to do the secret in a minute?
Did we ask people who were opposed?
I did.
I think there was somebody, someone tried to pipe in, I think.
Did I say? I'm sorry. Did anybody here oppose to this?
Because she asked Moshe to come in and just confirm.
No, I think she just wanted to confirm in her mind.
Yeah, if there's anybody on Zoom that wishes to comment, if you could just raise your hand or unmute yourself, or send us a chat. I don't see anybody.
No.
I mean, I don't see anything that would change substantially on the secret. Would change it at all, really.
Okay.
I mean, is that, can you concur with that, Andy?
It's important to remember that they're talking about converting the entire second floor into apartments. So the square footage request is still the same. They're asking for variance to convert the second floor fully into apartments, so whether it's nine or 10, it's still the same square footage, it's still the same area that you're considering.
It's still the same acreage as the property.
Correct. It's not expanding the...
Right. Okay. So, Madam Chair, in PLZBA 2022-0006, I'd ask the board to find this proposal to be an unlisted action with sufficient information available on which to make a determination that the project is not expected to cause significant environmental impact.
Do we have a second?
Also.
Okay, John, on the motion on the favors? Aye. Opposed? Carrie, do we have a motion on the application itself?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion regarding PLZBA 2022-0006, based on the contents of the application and the information presented this evening, including the change from nine to 10 units, which has been described by counsel as de minimis and not impacting the overall square footage being converted. I'm going to make a motion that we approve the request to add the 10 units and relief of the requirement of 34 units per acre. And once again, based on everything we've heard this evening, everything that was included in the application, it seems that the benefits of the property owner can't be achieved by other means feasible. The undesirable change in the neighborhood will not happen. The request is not substantial, and we view it as not having an adverse physical or environmental impact. And the difficulty isn't self-created, in that there's difficulty in the area renting out commercial office space. So with all that being said, make a motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, and on the motion, Katie McLaren?
I vote yes to approve.
Jack McCann? John Normile?
I vote yes to approve.
And Kathy Conroy, yes to approve. Okay, so good luck with both your projects.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, everybody. Thank you so much.
Okay, next case, PLZBA 2022-0017, 476 Pauling Avenue. An area variance, maximum density and parking, and a use variance for a multifamily. The applicant Caroline Rudd proposes to convert the first-floor office space back into a one-bedroom apartment. Okay, Caroline, I presume?
I'm Caroline Rudd, and I inherited the building from my parents on their passing. My father had been an optometrist with his office on the first floor of 476 Pauling Avenue since probably the 1950s. He passed in 1995, and the first-floor unit had been empty for quite some time, a long time. And I believe in the past, it had been an apartment. There was a, in the way back, there was a bathroom. The tub still exists, and a small kitchen area, which matches the floor plan immediately above it. So we're seeking permission. Permission's not the right word. I'm an elementary teacher, so forgive my... So we're looking to change the zoning from a three-bedroom to a four-bedroom, or no, three-unit residential to a four-unit residential. Since there was no need for an office space anymore, and there's need, obviously, for residential apartments. And a one-bedroom, I don't think would cause much change to the neighborhood, as many apartment buildings around it are for families also. Do I need to read everything?
No, 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 no. Just if we had questions.
Okay.
Yeah, so this is an existing non-conforming use. Right, the zoning was changed around this building back in the 80s, when our current zoning code was adopted. So the structure obviously predates it, but the use of the doctor's office predates that as well. So the three units in there today is considered non-conforming. It's an R2 zone. But they're here seeking the additional unit.
And that's what makes it a use variance.
Correct. It's a use variance, because R2 allows for two-family residential. This would be considered, even the three units she currently has, would be considered multifamily. She doesn't need a variance for the existing non-conforming, but she does, because she's had it.
Right, okay. Is there anybody here to speak in favor of this proposal?
Does my husband count?
Anybody to speak in opposition? Okay, do we have any questions for the applicant? There's no reason to carry on.
I will say, we did receive we did receive some public comment on this. Did you guys receive that? There was, I received, I believe, an email from a resident taking issue with the not providing parking, I think was one of his... Taking issue with the not providing parking, I think was one of his issues. And then he also. I think his take on that was there's area to provide parking there, but also there's ample on-street parking. And then I think his other comment was relating to. Some previous. Activity with the 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 previous residents there and some some police responses.
We did have a tenant that had to be removed.
Which of course has right, no bearing on.
Right, right.
And we know the parking wouldn't, I mean, going forward, that's not even gonna be.
It would be taking, it would be taking, it would be taking fantastic lawn area from the parcel to provide parking.
Right, right, I mean, that's what we're saying. There is, you know, space to have a driveway to go down back, but there's a nice little lawn area.
Right.
Which we really don't want to.
Good amenity for a four unit.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're right, you're right.
I I would just add that it's my understanding that the request involves two variances. One, which is an increase in density, much like the two we just heard. And then the second is the use variance to allow the four unit in the R two zone.
And the area variance says density and parking, so are they, do they have to be done separately or can we do?
Well, we, okay, so we listed the area variances on there. Because those are numerical variances, but the the use variance is also inside. I think those are two actions.
Yeah, but the area variance, do you have to have one area variance for the density and one variance for the parking, or can you do both with density and parking?
Don't know if it can be one voter.
I I think there's two area variances, one use variance, you should have three separate actions.
Do we have any further questions or any comments, John and Jack? No, okay.
So we'll do a secret. Madam Chair, for PLZBA twenty twenty-two zero zero seventeen. I'd ask the board to find this proposal to be an unlisted action. With sufficient information available upon which to make a determination that the project is not expected to cause significant environmental impact.
Do we have a second? John, on the motion, all in favor? I, opposed, carried. Do we have three motions? For the area variances and use variance?
Now, Madam Chair. I'm. Okay. Madam Chair, for PLZBA twenty twenty-two zero zero seventeen. I make a positive motion to approve. First, the area variance for maximum density. I do not believe that adding a one-bedroom apartment. In place of a commercial office is going. To cause any detriment to the neighborhood. The character of the neighborhood will not change. I would also propose, make a positive motion to approve the area variance for the parking. There is ample parking in the area. And those. Four parkings. Why is it four parking? Oh, because it's a new, I'm sorry, because it's a new.
They're existing units, right, so.
Okay.
Right, there's.
So there are already. Right, so there are already units there and it is not a problem now, so adding a one-bedroom apartment is not gonna. Add to any kind, there's, there's, it's not gonna cause an. An undesirable change, in my opinion. I would also make a positive motion to approve the use variance. For the multi-family. Structure. Again, I do not believe it's gonna cause any detriment to the neighborhood. In fact, it might improve it because it would not have a vacant office front anymore. It would provide needed housing. I also believe that this, the need for the variance was not self-created. It was, it's, the building has existed for many years, as is. And only because of this change is the applicant here to get the the variance. So that is a positive motion to approve.
Okay, so it's a positive motion to approve the area variance for the density and parking. No, I'm sorry, the one area variance for the density, one area variance for the parking and use variance for the multifamily.
A second, all three.
Okay, John second, and on the motion, Jack McCann.
I vote yes to approve.
Katie McLaren?
Yes to approve.
John Normile?
I vote yes to approve.
And Kathy Conroy, yes to approve.
Thank you, good luck. Thank you very much.
Okay, the next case, PLZBA twenty twenty-two, D F zero zero sixteen. Three twenty-nine Ninth Street, a use variance from a two-family residential to a three-family residential. The applicant McBone L L C proposes to convert a two-family residential to a three-family residential property. Might that be you?
Yes, hi, my name is Rich Bone.
Oh, you're there, okay, I'm looking at the guy.
That's Eric, he's our, he's our planning tech.
Oh my God, you get all these new people.
Eric is New James and Angie is the new Dash.
Okay, well, there are no New Jameses or Dashes, okay, maybe you're. Eric, sorry, Mr. Mc, is your name McBone, Mr. McBone?
My name is Rich.
Rich, okay, Rich. And could you tell us your address, please?
Uh, yeah, so the property address is three twenty-nine Ninth Street in Troy.
Right, and where do you live, my question?
Oh, I live in Colony.
Okay, just for the record, we need your address for the record.
Yep, my address is thirty-two Norbrick Drive.
Okay. All right, and you, oh, three twenty-nine Ninth Street, it's a two-family and you want to make it a three-family.
Yeah, so, um.
Okay, go ahead.
Before we start, I do want to just say that I did work with Dash very closely on this and he was awesome, so I was kinda sad that he put his notice in.
As well, although these two lovely people seem to be picking up very well.
Okay, well, I did tell him that I mentioned that. I did tell him that I've mentioned how hopeful he was, so even if he's not here in attendance, I just want to note that.
You're right.
Um, so regarding my project, the building was always used as a three-family. They just really never had a permit for the basement floor. There's a lot of three families in the area. I just am not the person to do things incorrectly, so I wanted to just follow the process. And do everything correctly. There's actually. A lot of three families in the immediate area that are pretty much identical to the building. And I just don't think it would have been a good idea to basically extend the space. On the first floor, making the apartment unaffordable for the average rents in the area. So it just makes a lot more sense to me to have the additional unit and price them accordingly to make them affordable for prospective tenants. I don't think it's out of character for the area. I'm investing in the city and a piece of existing stock. And, you know, I just want to do everything the right way.
Okay, so you have this building and there's a first and a second floor and there's also the basement floor, garden apartment or whatever. And you want that one to be legit.
Correct, yes, exactly.
All right, and it's been that way for a while, it's already been there?
Yeah, it's already been there. It has the national grid meters in there that that are separate for each floor. It was clearly being used that way. They just never did it correctly.
Okay, and if you were to do it, if you were to. Be denied, shall we say, word we don't like to use, and just have the first and the second. Then, what did you say that you would make that one part of the first or would just be, what did you say about that?
Yeah, so I would probably just make it like included in like the first floor.
Okay, I thought this is.
Yeah, but then, but then it would just be too expensive, like what I would need to get for it, so it's just not feasible.
Right, right, okay, yes, Erin, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, Rich, have you closed on this property yet?
Yes, and there were some questions, I think, with the person that took over with Dash. She was kinda confused, maybe, I think, or I don't know. But yes, it did transfer from the estate of like Edna May, that's who I bought it from, like her son, over to me.
And so, and so the 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 property, when you, when you took possession of it, did you have three leases in place?
Um, actually, the building, actually, the building is vacant.
Oh, okay, and how, it it has been vacant for how long?
Um, I don't actually, I don't know, I don't know how long it's been vacant. When I closed on it, the son didn't really have too much information. But it appears that it probably has been vacant for a while because it's just full of, it's just, it's just full of stuff that you can just tell the heads accumulated over years.
That's, that's, that's why he's here for this. If if he had closed on, if he had bought that building with three leases in place. It would be an existing non-conforming use and he would be able to continue to do that in perpetuity as long as it doesn't go vacant for twelve months. But he's here tonight because he did go vacant for twelve months. And so now that use is no longer, you you can't kind of keep it going.
Yeah, right.
Sort of like the the previous applicant with the doctor's office. And if they ever shuttered that for a year, they wouldn't have been able to open a doctor's office without coming in and getting his areas.
Okay, I see.
So that's kind of where he's at.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Okay, makes sense. Do we have anybody here to speak in favor of this proposal? Anyone to speak in opposition on your Zoom?
No, I don't see any hands raised. No, no chat messages, no.
Okay, but now from the board, do you have something you want to ask?
Yes, please. I have a question on some of the numbers that are presented.
Sure.
I don't know, Erin could handle this. This is in regards to the. The maximum density is twelve units per acre. Right?
Right.
Fifty-five units per acre are proposed. So the the number in terms of relief is. Forty-three? All right, I'm sorry, I'm reading something that says sixty-one.
This was the one that was.
I'm sorry, I missed.
That number seems high, but it's because obviously the lot is very small.
Just over a twentieth of an acre, it's very, very big.
He's not asking for fifty-three units.
No, I understand.
Yeah, no, no, not, not fifty-three, just. Just the blessing to use the one that's already there correctly.
Okay. Yeah, you had the other, do we have any other questions, Jack, Katie, no questions? Okay, Katie.
Um, Madam Chair for PLZBA twenty twenty-two dash zero zero sixteen. I would ask the board to find this proposal to be an unlisted action with sufficient information available upon which to make a determination. That the project is not expected to cause significant environmental impact.
Do we have a second? Okay, John, second, on the motion, all in favor?
I.
Opposed, carried. Okay, now we need a motion on the variance.
Much like the last application would be three, two area variances, one for density, one for parking and then a use variance.
This just says use.
Use. For this one.
Oh, wait a minute. Down here it says additionally, three parking spaces are required.
Yes, the, I I see what you're saying. The second line there says use variance. It should say area variance and use variance like the the application before.
And the area variance. Right, and area variance is for the parking?
Yeah, I think the way it was noted.
And the density. So it's exactly the same.
It's exactly the same.
I stumbled through the last one. So, for PLZBA twenty twenty-two zero zero sixteen, I would make a. Positive motion to approve. Let's start with the area variance for the maximum density relief of fifty-five units per acre slot. Oh, sorry, right, I'm looking at the old one, okay, forty-three, I apologize. So an undesirable change clearly will not be produced in the character of the neighborhood. In fact, just the opposite is going to happen. Once this building is in use again. I don't believe that this is any kind of substantial area variance. And I just. Okay, not a self-created difficulty because he's just building within the footprint that's there. And trying to do the right thing by having it properly moved. I would also make a positive motion to approve the area variance for the parking. Again. You can only use what you have. I don't believe that's going to be substantial, three units. In that neighborhood. Is not gonna cause a whole lot of parking issue. So again, I do not believe that will cause an undesirable change in the neighborhood. Nor have any kind of an adverse effect on the physical or environmental in conditions in the neighborhood. So I would also make a positive motion to approve the use variance. The building in question. Clearly was meant to be a three-unit structure and that is what the owner is looking to do. The need was not really, was not caused by this applicant. It was caused by the vacancy in the building when he bought it. So it is. A, I don't believe that another, the building could be used for another feasible method in that, especially in that that neighborhood. And again, it's not gonna alter the character, it's going to enhance the character of the neighborhood. So again, a positive motion to approve a use variance. For the change, I'm sorry, let me just. A use variance to change from a two-family to a three-family residential. A, an area variance for the parking and a, an area variance for the. Density.
Excellent. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second, on the motion, Jack McCann?
Yes to approve.
John Normile?
I vote yes to approve.
Katie, Katie McLaren?
Um, I vote yes to approve and I just want to say that I teach at school too. So most likely one of my families will be moving into that house or hopefully they will be and. Solve some of the homelessness that we have in in our building, so I appreciate any, any good faith efforts in that neighborhood.
And Kathy Conroy, yes. So, there you go, good luck to you.
Thank you, I just do have a quick question. I know when I had corresponded with the building department. Um, they had just made, they had just made it very clear that a correspondence of some sort is to be sent to them for me to move forward. So I was just hoping, I don't know who handles that, but if that could be done, I would appreciate that.
We'll, we'll get that over to them tomorrow for you.
Okay, thank you.
Good luck.
Okay, good luck.